Tony, I guess we'll get started with your stuff.
I have a few things this time. The first thing I have is payroll claims for 430 in the amount of 329,376.29.
And those were sent out early.
Yep.
To us, so you gentlemen had a chance to review those claims.
Yes, payroll, we'll have accounts payable next.
Yeah, motion to accept.
Motion's been made in second to go ahead and prove the claims, 329,376.29.
Those were the payroll claims. Now we have accounts payable claims to be paid on 5/12, and that amount is 146,013.04. 146,013.04, and I believe Reece sent this out a little bit early to you guys. She was on vacation, so.
Yeah, I wish they were all that small, that's the thing.
Yeah.
I need a motion on that if you gentlemen don't have any further questions on those claims.
So moved.
And motion's made second to approve 146,013.04.
Okay, next we have the Allied Weekly Claims. Those are in the amount of 53,218.64. And it looks like we have pharmacy is 26,762.98. Medical is 26,455.66. So it's about half and half, medical and pharmacy. See anything on that, Rex?
Motion to approve.
Let Steve have a chance to look at it.
Well, that is just about exactly half of Joe.
A second. Okay, motion's been made in second to go ahead and prove Allied Claims of 53,218.64.
Next I have the Clerk's Monthly Report, which I believe I handed out to the three of you. I hope I did, because I do not have an extra copy here.
I got a copy here. Did you get a copy? Do you guys get a copy?
It would be like the treasurer and give us plenty of copies.
Yeah.
You all three have a copy of it?
Yes. No, you have any questions on that?
Uh, I don't believe I do. Motion to accept.
Okay, motion's been made in second to go ahead and approve clerk of the Circuit Courts Report.
Next we have the Month of Report submitted by Treasurer Ed Dyer. He happens to be here if you have any questions on that.
Ed, do you have anything you want to point out on that?
No, everything's in regular order. I will say that I invested in a bond for five years. We were able to get a pretty good interest rate of .9. It sounds ridiculous, because that's ridiculously low, but it's the highest I've seen for months and months. So I invested a half million dollars in it and for five years. We're only limited to so much that we can put out more than three years. But I would like to, on a daily basis, of trying to invest some of our money regularly, maybe every six months or so.
Was that from a rollover?
No, no. I don't want to say excess funds, because there's never excess, but funds we don't need.
That we don't have to keep liquid.
Correct.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I need a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion's made in second to approve the Treasurer's Monthly Report.
And next I had handed out the SWCD Remote Hours Worked. Sandy worked 13, Kenzie worked 24, for a total of 37 in the month of April.
Any questions on that, gentlemen?
So she's got the White House and Office of Secretary have upgraded their stance with their COVID restriction policy of operating in person at USDA and a 50% level staff in the building. So the USDA is still at 50%.
Still, yeah, still within the federal guidelines, so.
All right. Do you need a motion on that?
Uh, go ahead and make a motion. We'll enter the report in ten minutes since we do have it in front of us.
All right, motion to approve.
Okay, motion's been made in second to go ahead and enter into the minutes the report provided by Adams County Soil and Water concerning the hours.
I have the Animal Shelter Report for April. They collected $40 in fees, and I had also passed that out to you all.
Very little activity. Got seven dogs, four cats, two were claimed, four were adopted, and they were zero disposed. They still have five in the shelter.
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and take a motion to enter that report in the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made second to approve the Adams County Shelter's Report to be entered into the minutes.
That is all I had on this day.
For sure.
Well, I would have had more, but I passed that off tomorrow, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, Brad.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
So, hey, Cat Wenzel from Butler, Famburn, and Super, and then Randy Layman with the Trails Project, and I asked Mark when to be here, too. So on the bridge, I'd sent an email, and the Trails Bridge over 27 down there, or 27 over Walbach River, there's an issue that just came up with the upright vertical slats on the hand railing. And my understanding on all this is that it was built to federal standards, and so they had a certain width they met, and by Indiana State Standards, there's another width. So there is an issue there, or could be an issue. I shouldn't say there is an issue. So I thought, you know, I invited all these gentlemen in today to discuss it, and, you know, decision's gonna have to be made on what to do with, how we want to handle it, or how they stand with.
Does the approval depend on our county building and planning specs?
I'm going to actually, just sit down and defer to all you guys who've been dealing with this, you know more of the precise details. But the project, my understanding, is a federal budget project, so that's why they follow the federal rules. As far as the Indiana, I'll just, I'm the one that brought all this to light. It may be a mess, maybe, I don't know. But just driving past the project, just looking at the rail, I thought it looked short, because I thought the balusters looked too far apart. By National Building Code, we're looking for 42 inches in height, and no more than four inches apart. So I just stopped in one day and measured. Nobody was there, and then I just asked the question. I had learned that they had built that to ASHTO standards, which is a bridge standard. So they did find out that even by ASHTO, it's within 42. So that part does need correction by the standard.
And that is being corrected.
Right, so there was 42 inch height agrees, no matter which code you look at. The four inch separation, no less than, no more than four inches, is no more than six inches apart on the ASHTO standard. So they do have, I think, a 37 eighths, or a fraction under six inches on the spacer. So it does meet the code they were going for once they add the 42 inch, once they add another bar on top. I just asked the question, I, by building code standards, anything 30 inches off the ground is required to meet the four inch spacing. I know that nothing, you know, once, like I say, once the 42 inch gets added, it's correct. Nobody with the project has messed up any way they perform on the bowels. However, I would highly suggest we add a second, you know, another baluster between all the other balusters. Because I just can't imagine 31 inches off the ground, or the top of grass, you make sure it's 40 centers, and now we're gonna have a bridge that could have all kinds of kids on it, that were 20 feet off of a river that's flowing, and we're letting it go in six inches. Seems a little, not like a good idea. But that's just where I'm at with it.
Well, even the four inch spacing is a pretty standard construction spacing.
It has been for a long time in building code, yes.
Right.
A long time. I don't even know when it changed, but it's been a decade at least.
Wonder how those federal standards are more relaxed.
What would take precedent over that, Mark? Would, since we got a stricter?
The ASHTO takes precedent. I mean, it is, like I say, it's.
So the state would take precedent over that?
Once they add the 42 inch rail, it passes the proper codes for a walking bridge. There's no code violation.
Are they gonna add that 42 inch rail?
That's what I understood.
Yes, they're in the process right now of that's being added.
They're just adding something to the existing rail?
Yes.
And the balusters are just flat pieces of steel.
Right.
Are they bolted on or are they welded?
They're bolted.
So I don't, I mean, if you chose to add more just for safety and make sure nothing happens, I don't know if they literally put a bit more on in place, or throw holes and bolt more on. I'm not sure if there's an answer, easy answer there.
Well, the whole four inch spacing, the idea behind that, I always understood was just so a kid's head couldn't stick through there, and slip through there.
So that's what makes me nervous about. Want to put it down in a current, and as of today, when the water's high as it is, you know, just reaching down and pulling them out, they're gonna be that way, bottom line.
So the question would be, if you add that additional upright, how much more is that going to be costly to the county? Because I understand it's gonna be in the county's dime, is that correct?
The state is noted that if you wanted to go to a tighter restriction standard, the state not participating in the funding for that additional.
But the 42 inch, they will.
That is already the case.
Is there any other way that could be corrected, instead of putting one in the middle of those, running one horizontal, like two or three of them horizontal, flat, and attach it to it? Could that be a corrective action, Mark? That would be cheaper, wouldn't it, than to try to go and put one in between each one of those risers?
It would be less material, yes.
Is that an alternative?
It is. Again, if you're going for, again, like I said, it's actually not wrong, but it is. You still need to keep the four inch, so now you're talking vertical four inch. So you got the six this way, the zone is four this way, no more than four.
So you gotta go, if you run horizontal, you gotta go every four inches?
Thirty-six inches tall now, but it's up off the bottom, you got the rail, so it's probably 30 inches of space in there. So you'd have to run three, three or four rows through it.
Is that aluminum rail?
Steel.
Oh, it's steel. So you couldn't put any aluminum on there, because then it'd react when.
Technically, the historical guidelines, it has to be a similar material as the previous structure.
Yeah.
Well, what do you think, Randy? You've been involved with that thing for a long time.
Yeah, I have, and I have a, I've asked other trail organizations to get back to me about how their bridges, and the iron bridges that they've had, what their specs are. But I got, I heard about this pretty late, so I haven't got any response to this yet. So I, that was one thing I wanted to see, how it would compare with other bridges, with other pedestrian bridges. Maybe something to worry about, except they're not worrying about any of what's happening with other bridge sites. And I really just can't answer that.
The work in progress right now, where are we at?
They're painting, they're painting the bridge. So that's another thing, with time factor here.
That's what I cited, again, this doesn't really go with the bridges, I get it, it's ASHTO. That's where I'm coming up with what I'm.
Well, from a liability standpoint, it's inconsistent with what we ask homeowners and commercial buildings to be. So.
But we have to take into consideration the safety, the public safety, that's the priority item right here.
That's one of our main, I mean, that's one of our main.
I agree with you, Mark, from that aspect.
It's my job, the safety, so that's why it's sort of being a priority.
Because, I mean, five and seven eights, a kid's head couldn't fit, a small kid.
There's a reason why they don't get on, or anything else.
Yeah.
What company is actually doing the work, Brad?
The Paintwork.
Yeah, well, who would put the banister if we would decide to go?
You've actually done the construction with what?
And then construction, that's not the bridge rehabilitation.
It's gonna be a notice published in the paper.
Well.
I mean, you know, one of the concerns at this point is, you know, the timeframe of it.
It'll be published probably later this week.
Decide to, I mean, whichever way you decide to go, if you change it, you know, now it's gonna be, push the timeframe back more, they are painting it right now, and then the cost.
Could we get a proposal to correct the spacing, both the time and cost? Is that something you guys would be willing to do, is do a proposal for the additional?
I could send a request for, to the contractor for a request for pricing.
This code section says that from a height of 34 inches to 42 inches above the adjacent walking surfaces, a sphere of eight inches in diameter shall not pass. So it looks like your four inch limitation would be from the walking surface up to 34 inches. That may limit how many, that may limit how many verticals you'd put, or horizontals you'd put in if you had to do that. So. I don't know.
Would that be the cheapest way and quickest way to get it done?
I mean, yes, I mean, the reason we're not following IBC is the National Building Code. You know, it is obviously in building, all residential situations, which you have higher amounts of foot traffic of varying ages of kids to adults. ASHTO, pedestrian guides for ASHTO allow the larger spacing, for a six inch or it's not passed through because, you know, the density of residential type of traffic is not the same as in a building. But that's the main reason the ASHTO for this one, that's commercial, so that's not what they're.
Right.
Presidential, some of those things, I think.
What's your recommendation on this bridge railing?
I don't want to see it that far apart. I just feel like the first time something horrible happens, I'm sitting here wishing we did something.
Our responsibility would be the safety. We have to take into consideration. I don't think we're caught.
Now that you know about it.
Or five of the walking path, it's like a hill on the side of the road.
Well, it would be different if it was not an pedestrian bridge. But I guess I would think if we get a proposal to correct the railing, I guess that would be my thought.
Why don't you get some quotes from a couple of different sources for verticals and for horizontals, see how it comes in, get more than one quote. You've got local welders and contractors that could probably do it. Need to specify the materials.
I'm hearing they're gonna, they want to get quotes from local people, so they're gonna do it after we're done with our contract.
Well, do you mean as part of this project, or would you get local to do it after the project's done?
I'd get it right away, and.
Then it has to go through the contractor. If you want, if you want it done right away, before the project's final, they don't have to go through the front contractor who already has the contract and their stuff.
Well, you don't want to do that.
No, so I would say probably finish it up, and then we just come in after the fact and wrap it up. Mark, is that what you're thinking?
Then you're gonna have touch up.
We don't want to touch the federal, we don't want to get involved in that aspect of it.
It'll cost twice as much.
That would kind of be my thought, too, if you guys go ahead and finish up as per your contract, and they would, we would come in with proposals for bolt-on corrections. That sound?
That sound workable, Mark? Do you have to, I mean, who, when you get your work done, who puts a seal of approval on the finished product?
NDOT.
NDOT does?
Yes.
So we would be able to satisfy their requirements, and then we could come in and then satisfy the states?
Once, once we're done, it would be the Historical Society to, you have to go by file, whatever the Historical Society got by.
Okay.
Well, Randy, would that be something that would be acceptable for you?
Well, we can, even if the bridge is technically finished by NDOT, it doesn't have to be open. It may close. Signage.
We could just put signage that says, "Don't let your kids stick their head through the rail."
Well, it's closed, you can't use it.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, to sum it up, then we'll go ahead and have it finished, have IDOT go ahead and sign off on it, and then we'll take it, then the Historical Society takes it over, and then we'll go ahead from there?
We don't, we don't take, the South Adams Trails, it's really gonna be a county, a bridge. Trails turned over to the county.
Okay.
It's not, it won't be owned by us.
So basically, they handed over to you guys, and then you guys will hand it over to them.
Okay, all right.
Would that interfere with the historical aspect of the bridge?
Having the extra rails on it, or the extra slats?
I don't think so. I mean, I think as long as you make it look authentic.
The extra plastic stuff will not take away from it. It's when you start using different materials, a different type of bolts, and you're using quarter bolts to the rivets. So that's when it starts to have an issue, and you start violating the NDOT.
So whoever we would have finished would have to use the same type of material on rivets?
Correct.
So they're really.
Mark, can we do a consensus, or do we have this in the minutes?
Well, you have in the minutes that you directed to get quotes, after, finish the bridge and get quotes.
Okay. I need to go ahead and have a motion to make that we go ahead and finish the bridge, and then after it's finished, turned over to the county, we go ahead and get quotes on bringing it up to the state code.
Yeah, so, and I don't know whether your organization would be in charge of getting the quotes and proposals with similar materials, finish and fasteners.
I think maybe we should, I think the county should be responsible, we're gonna be ended up paying for it. I think we ought to be responsible for getting our own quotes and having them presented to us.
Is that something you would be able to do, Mark? Yeah, if we just put those specs in for a bolt-on solution to, so four inch sphere doesn't pass through the railing, so. So, yeah, I'd make that a motion.
Okay, motion's been made in second that we go ahead and approve the finishing of the bridge. So IDOT will sign off on it, and we turn it over to the county, we'll go ahead and get quotes on bringing it up to the state code. Is that okay, Mark?
I agree.
Motion's been made in second, Tony.
Got it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Randy.
I have, Rex, is I need to report back to my board. Paying for the extra work that's been done. Can I tell them that it will be the county that's paying for it?
If it's gonna be turned over to the county, I think we ought to be responsible for following up on that. Yeah. If that's okay with you.
I can object to that.
Okay, all right. Is that okay, Brad?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you very much for coming, appreciate your time.
We can just take it out of county highway.
Well, okay, now we have another issue.
I'm thinking.
No, he said take it out of county highway.
Did you volunteer something, Brad?
What's that?
Did you volunteer some money?
No, standard. All right, we're good on that. Okay, so my next thing I have, Monroe, the town of Monroe is continuing their work. They've been working on their sewer, their water, and, you know, last year they came and they crossed the road twice here on Triple Zero. They have a, it's part of the water project. So on Triple Zero again, and of course, between 124 and 100 South, it's gonna be close to where their new sewer holding tank is. They would like to close it down again. So the week of May 24, it's gonna be a 24-hour closure. And so basically, you know, they'll come in and get the permits from us, and then once the permits are filed, if you guys okay it, they'll do the work, you know, they'll take care of the signage and all that for the road, take care of all that. But Justin just wanted me to, you know, make sure I bring this up to you guys and make sure that's okay. And they're shooting for the week of May twenty-fourth, obviously, because of the way the weather's been, we all know for sure. You know, but they will let us know, they will let the sheriff's department know. Uh, so everybody will be informed if one of actually does happen.
And they're gonna handle everything?
Yes, they will handle everything.
Is that a truck route, is triple zero a truck route?
Technically, no, for local, for local traffic. It's not supposed to be.
So you won't have to set up a detour and all that stuff?
No, it's actually no through trucks, is what I think it is technically, what they're laying. So Justin just, you know, wanted me to bring this in front of you guys and make sure that, you know, basically that's.
Okay, motion, go ahead and approve that project if it's okay?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, approve Brad's request.
Alright, the other thing. You know, we've been, I've been working on this for a while, you guys asked. I got one company to get back with me about the gasoline, the fuel tank system. I sent you guys an email and you're now, we're down to two hundred and twenty thousand. And of course, this is still a rough price, we haven't expected, we haven't been it. But we're getting more detailed about it, so they have better ideas, so two hundred and twenty thousand for a new fuel system.
That's above ground?
Above ground.
And they take out the old?
And they take out the old, yes. So I wanted to just come to you guys again today, you know, I've gotten a little more information. Maybe see if you still have an idea on what direction you'd like me to head. Excuse me. You know, like I said, I've also gotta set it up, so whatever we decide, you know, I can go the other way with it, too. So I've been in contact with different businesses.
I think, Steve, you brought up an interesting question concerning the fact, I think if, if we would investigate a long-term contract with a company, if they would supply all the equipment and so on, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Yeah. Is that something, Brad, is even a, an option to look at?
Most of these companies do not, the ones I, I'm sorry, the ones I've been dealing with do not offer anything over, uh, two thousand gallons. They've gotten away from that. Now, I'm not saying there wouldn't be somebody, you know, not the local ones I've been in contact with, there could be somebody out for a route, but the local ones, they don't do that anymore.
How big are the tanks above ground that you, that you're looking at?
Be, uh, ten thousand on-road fuel. And then we would split it up, five and five for the, all for diesel gas.
So it'd be kind of a smaller version of what's out at solid waste, the way they got their setup? They got above-ground tanks, you got the concrete barriers around it, similar to that?
Uh, no, they do not, it's a double-wall tank, they don't have, don't have to have, uh.
They don't have to have the concrete or, okay, okay.
All I gotta do is have the pillars around and keep it.
So are you considering contracting, you know, with Co-op or somebody is not a good option or what?
No, um, hey, the options are also. No, that is, I mean, we can do that.
Have you contacted National Oil?
Yes. I've spoken to the gentleman over there that's, I guess he's in charge of it.
Advantages and disadvantages of, of, uh, to you as far as operations?
Yeah, so if it's on-site, obviously, anytime day or night, we can go get fuel. And it's right there.
And that's during the snow?
We can go day or night at another facility that's close and get fuel also, but it's there, you know, we can. I shouldn't say there's a chance of running out, because even if there's other facilities, they better not run out, that would be good business. But it's just, you know, when the guys come in, the guys can go out, they can stop there. And granted, they can drive a half mile or an extra mile to do it also. You know, we talked about that before, it's, it's more about everything is right there on site.
I would agree with that, I would agree with you on that. So worst-case scenario would be a snowstorm?
Yes.
Okay. And you're plowing in the middle of the night, you got all the trucks out in the middle of the night?
Yeah.
So. You only got, you only got information from one company, you think it was?
They were the only ones that returned information.
Oh, okay, is there anybody else out?
I spoke to two others, they returned the information, I called the one last week and they said, we will give you something, I still haven't got it, so I've started waiting, I thought I'm gonna present it to you guys. Just as this is the, right now, the rough price. Yeah, I can only keep putting this off for several.
Right.
It's one of them, it's, I, I get it, I mean, if you wanna wait, you got a little bit of information now, wait till next week, talk about it again, maybe make a decision which way you'd like me to head, or you advise me to head. That's fine, I, I understand that.
I would suggest table on this until we see if we get some more.
I just can't believe that they, I mean, I know people are busy, but still. So, and that's fine, I can all bounce it again here the next day or two.
Okay, so Steve, you're suggesting we go ahead and table it for, at least until next week?
Till next week.
That's fine. So then hopefully next week, if you have some more proposals from suppliers, we can look at that and compare.
Yeah, like I said, I just got tired of waiting.
Yeah, I don't. You think there'll be a price difference? Like, say if you have to go to a supplier versus having our own? Well, we'll go ahead.
Yes, we're gonna pay more.
Okay, we'll go ahead and table it until next week, Brad.
Yeah, we will pay more than that.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
I do have one more question, Rex. Um, now, you wanted to put ten thousand gallon tanks, what does, um, solid waste have out there?
They're not that big. They all look like, they don't look that, that big to me. Now, I would say they're half that size.
Yeah.
So would you need near the regulations with two five-thousand gallon tanks than a ten-thousand gallon tank?
No, once we get above ground, regulations totally change.
Isn't there a difference on the amount of fuel, too, that you're holding?
With gas, there, it's gotta be so far away from buildings and that kind of stuff. As far as the quantity, no. Now, if we go down under a thousand, then there's basically no regulations. But it's a thousand, never.
Okay.
Alright.
That's it, Rex.
Yeah, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Okay.
Um, one other thing I was gonna ask about, if you guys have had a chance, or, you know, we need to get together about the, uh, bridge.
The bridge, we talked about that, we're gonna try to, try to get together with some of the information, because they've not been through the process. I've been through it, I think, maybe once.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that up as a reminder.
So we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna discuss that a little bit more, I think, on Wednesday.
Okay, and then, uh, basically, we started going this week, what we can, being as wet as it is, you know, they're gonna go out and try, they're gonna hit the spots they can hit. But also, I wanna bring it up, um, the high water, all, all of the swing-out gates that we have are now closed. And then we got the roads closed. We probably got eight or ten temporary signs we had put out at different spots. You know, some of them are typical, but they did flood. So we have a lot of flood stuff out, so in saying that, I was just like, uh, once again, if the gates are out, don't drive through the water. We had some incidences yesterday, but not today, thankfully, just if the gates are out, you see high water, don't drive through it, please.
You haven't had to rescue anybody, have you?
Uh, one, we had to get off the car, but we were able to back out to him with the tall truck.
Okay.
Down.
Okay, very good, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Yeah, I felt more like the engineer in Highway Park today was blaming them.
That's okay. Uh, Michelle, you're on. Thanks for keeping on top of that, Brad.
I'm trying.
Yep. Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Nice to meet you. Haven't had a pleasure. I meant to give this out soon to you guys, so it would be on your package, I apologize.
Thank you. Oh, thanks, Michelle.
Mark from the back, baby?
Should be, yeah.
So I'm with the Council on Aging, uh, I've been here four years. A little bit about the Council on Aging, um, maybe you guys really don't, haven't heard about it, or are views then? We've been around since nineteen seventy-three, so forty-eight years in April. Clients call in, our clients are those sixty and over and disabled adults. So they call in with as much notice as possible to schedule trips. Um, we go all over the place in the county. We do go out of county to Wells and Allen for medical only. Uh, we don't charge a fare, but we do ask for suggested donations, so if they're within their own city limits, or to cater, uh, a suggested donation, like, is five dollars. The trip actually costs us closer fifty, so they're getting a heck of a deal to ride for five, and they can bring in a tenant for free. With Adams County is ten, Loveton's twenty, Fort Wayne's fifty. The driver just picks up door-to-door, they do not stay with the appointments. About seventy percent of our trips are for medical, the main part of that would be diatosis, we take out patients every day of the week. Usually they run for four hours, so we take them in the morning, they run, and then we pick them up in the afternoon. So to ask a family member to do both of those trips, they would be missing work, so they really do appreciate our service. We have riders all over both ends of the county. We do take people head off, then we get groceries, do the banking, beauty shop, lawyer, heating assistance, wherever it's available. On average, the rider donations for Council on Aging average about twelve thousand dollars a year. Uh, our average budget is around a hundred and fifty, so we're not quite getting where they need to be, but they're pretty well consistent with that. Um, if you look on the second page, typically, we average six thousand trips a year, so with COVID, that was down, we were closed for five weeks. So we average about four thousand. We do receive some funding, so it's called Title III B of the Older Americans Act from nineteen sixty-seven. We get eleven dollars reimbursement in one way for a trip for someone over sixty. So if you look there, uh, two thousand six hundred and sixty-three of those trips were partially funded. The difference from what we got reimbursed to what it cost us was sixty-four thousand deficit. Uh, also, we, the disabled trips that we provide do not get reimbursement. So that would be forty-five thousand, so. Our budget's a hundred and fifty, and a hundred and ten of it pretty much is for trips that we're taking that we're not getting reimbursement for. So very little is spent other than providing transportation. Just something, if you notice on the green sheet, um, I am out in the community as often as I can, finding money wherever I can. So since I started in seventeen, I brought in a hundred and twenty-six thousand additional dollars that were not in a budget or allocated by the county or a different organization. I was grateful enough to get some of the federal aid through the AICG protection plan and the disaster relief. Before those two came along, we were on target to run out of money quicker than I would have liked. So if you notice, in seventeen to twenty, I had to pull fifty-six thousand dollars out of savings, so at that rate, we have not that much more in savings after that. The only way we have savings is when someone leaves it to us and in a state, we don't make money, so I was grateful to get that. So I'm always out there looking for any grants, extra money that I can get. Here's some of the places we received support from, we're grateful to get the support from the county that we do. I do ask for Geneva and Monroe, United Way, I did a proposal for twelve thousand this year. I was hoping in the last couple of years, I've asked for thirty, I was hoping to ask for thirty-one this year, just to help until we get back to full speed, when we get our normal six thousand trips a year. You guys have any questions on that, 'cause I have a part two coming, so.
Michelle, looking at your, uh, additional funds acquired through the grants, you pull out your PPP and the other COVID with two thousand, that's twenty-three thousand five hundred. That, uh, plus the eighteen down there, I just forgot to see that, so you got about forty-two thousand dollars.
Right.
That you won't possibly, we may not get.
Well, yeah, that was a one-time deal.
Yeah, are the others, are the others, will they be reoccurring, uh, the other ones, possibly?
If I, if I apply for them, absolutely.
If you apply for them?
Yep.
Okay.
So I, I applied for an NDOT grant last month, and that would be worth almost sixty thousand dollars. And they would supply as many brand and transit vehicle completely paid for. Typically, in the past, we have had to pay twenty percent of that, which is around twelve grand. The government put a little extra money aside, so if I get approved, we will get a sixty thousand dollar vehicle for free.
I'll see where you're going on that.
Uh, it should be anytime, because I submitted it March second, so. Yeah, and the grants are just whenever I apply for them, so I don't, I mean, I go to the Kennedy Foundation pretty much every year, First United Methodist pretty much every year. I don't wanna use those sources too much as long as, if there's other people that need it and we're doing okay. Stan, I think your mom used our service.
All the time.
Yeah. And they really do appreciate, we're kind of a hidden gem, I wish we were more out in the public eye that they would know about us. They'll find out about us if you need us, and that's kind of the shame sometimes, just years from when they needed us, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a very, very well-used service, and, and I think, you know, with you searching out the money to support that program has just been incredible. You know, with the amount of time that you've, you've, uh, looked to, to continue that. You know, and there's things that I would love to see happen with Council on Aging.
I thought part two of that, that would maybe be part of the things you're thinking with Council on Aging.
So.
I have a dream that I would love to have a senior center for Adams County. Now, we have a South Adams Senior Center that's pretty well limited to Burn. I would love to have one in the Merit Center. In the old Northwest School.
Okay.
So. If you look to the second page, there's a color drawing, I was up talking to Colton today. They have some plans already set out with the Merit Center of what they would like to do. There are law enforcement looking into it, the blue portion, they're trying to get for daycare. The orange is the current gym.
Which way is north on here, I'm trying to figure out this.
The yellow is north.
Okay.
So currently, those yellow, so this is like their proposed, so it's not quite how it is right now, but the yellow three offices on the left are the current administrative offices that the school has. So like the secretary and the principal. I currently have three offices downstairs and we use all three, so I would love to have a similar workup. It is, it is multiracial accessible from the front, which would be excellent for seniors and the stable. And then the green area is where the current library is now. To use it as a senior center, as an activity center, I wouldn't have to do a whole lot of renovation to it, because it's already pretty well set up for a large, a large, you know, space. Also, if you notice, I played out a quarter, I would love, there's a lot of seniors that no longer have the space, the garden. I would love to have some raised gardens that they could plant plots on or plant flowers on and still have that outside feel, they can come check on it once a week. And then. Probably the biggest need, I mean, I could put the senior center aside, we really could use a garage for our vehicles. We are spending so much money in fuel, warming up the vehicles, especially the hydraulic ones in the wintertime. Because the hydraulic lifts will not work unless they're warm, so we can't take them, hop in, take them cold, because they're not gonna go up and down and move the patients or the clients that needs them. So on that same site, there's two small outer buildings kind of behind Fiesta Grill. I would love to put a garage, and I kind of went through and, if you look to the next page, just kind of had an idea, I haven't got the quote yet, but last time I did it, it was around twenty thousand dollars for something similar to this, that would be able to park three vehicles in, because we have three up here and two down in Burn.
Oh, my gosh, wouldn't that be nice, just to have a place inside for?
Yes.
Yeah, for vehicles.
Blessing, it would help on the wear and tear. Um, all of our vehicles right now, I've got a sixteen minivan, two nineteen minivans, and my big Transit that I'm replacing. So our vehicles are, are all pretty new, I mean, they're in great shape, I would like to keep them that way. That's just a dream.
And you say you, who, who of all you talked to on the Merit Center, just Colton or have you talked to?
And Connie, and I'm meeting with Colton tomorrow to go over there and look, just to have an idea of that, I haven't been in that building in thirty years, so I'd kind of like to see what it looks like now.
Is he in charge of that?
He's on the Merit Board, and so Connie, Mayor. I, I didn't know, I know some counties across the state are getting cares money. And since we're a nonprofit, I would, I would just put my hat in to see if there ever is a chance that a nonprofit, I, I would love the opportunity to have some place for seniors to go. I mean, if you look at the front, it could do. I would love the opportunity to have some place for seniors to go, I mean, if you look at the front, we could do, you know, art club, cards, games, bingo, the park yard. I would love low-impact exercise to get seniors out and moving, there's just really no place for them to go right now. It used to be McDonald's and...
Yeah.
It closed down for so long, I mean, really, there's, we used to, we sponsored bingo, and that hasn't been going on in a year and a half. It's just, I feel like seniors get so isolated, and then if they don't have a place to go, then I just...
Well, and I, and I think it would almost take a cooperative effort between the Economic Development Commission and the City of Decatur that actually owns the building. You know, because Colton has taken it on as a project as the Merit Center.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I, I think there'd be, it'd be kind of a cooperative effort between those two and us, you know, as far as working on, developing something at that site. So, so I, I think too, I think that would be great to have, you know, a, a place for seniors, a place for your offices, a place that was all on one level. No steps, no elevators, no, yeah.
There's a definite, you know, if people try to find us now, they have a hard time finding us now in the west.
Right.
Which is, it's a, we're grateful to have, so I don't know, you guys probably maybe didn't know that back in ninety-five, when they were rehabbing the stolen accounts on aging, it was the ones that did the five hundred thousand dollar grant. And the criteria on that was that they had to leave a aging agency in the area, we've inherited...
So if you had the money, is this space available?
Currently, yeah.
I mean, that, that would be a committed space for you.
Yep, if I would have the funding.
If you had the funding to do it?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
So you, you also, you're getting calls, from what I understand, in talking to the staff, you know, when people call Council on Aging, they're also inquiring about additional services that you don't have.
Absolutely.
As far as something like this.
Well, AJ and I home out of Fort Wayne offers diabetes training, caregiver support, and they would love to come down and offer classes in Adams County, but there is no place to go.
Right.
So...
Well, we got your request in here, and we'll be working on the commissioner's budget, so we'll go ahead and, and putting that request in.
All right, well, thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, and, yeah, we'll be, and then we'll need to talk about some of this other stuff, because we got some ideas that we can talk outside, okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle, appreciate it.
It's good to see a plan, and it's good to see you managing the current budget, but also looking ahead for, for additional things that can be done, so...
Yeah, thanks a lot, Michelle, appreciate it. Yeah, we can go ahead and make, well, if you want to go ahead and make her report a matter of minutes, we can make a motion on that, yeah. If you want to go ahead and put her report in the minutes, go ahead and make a motion on that, and I need a second.
Second.
Motion's made, second, we'll go ahead and enter Michelle's Council on Aging report into the minutes. Okay, Sheriff is, did you want to come now, Dan, or do you want to do it toward the end?
I'll do it at the end.
Okay, then John? Because Daniel's not here yet, so John will take you ahead of her.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what?
A signature for, yes, I think probably everybody...
Yeah, I haven't forgotten.
We have a grant that we're applying for, for our, to redo our multi-hazard mitigation plan, have to do it every five years, not done. We have a disaster, federal government could say, and has in the past, not to us, that until it's done, you don't get anything, so... We have a grant for nineteen thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. We have also a quote from an engineering firm that we've used in the past, of Indianapolis.
That's what he's doing now.
And it is a seventy-five twenty-five, but we can eliminate part, if not all, of the twenty-fives by end time match, by, I'm going to take, number people that attend the meetings. We take so much an hour for each of those, and all that, we can count against there. If we need it, I remember that in the past, we could ask for, among the River Basin, up to five thousand dollars. So more than likely, there's nothing going to, we'll end up probably owing nothing, I just want you to know ahead of time that it could be up to twenty-five percent, depending on however it gets done. What they need is approval from you.
Yeah. Yeah, give me, give me the okay to sign the contracts, so...
I think you've always been excellent at searching out and managing grants, and that's, that's always appreciated.
Well, we've, I've always had some really good people working in our department.
Yeah.
Who unfortunately...
You make a motion, okay.
This one here...
Second.
Motion's made, second, and we'll go ahead and approve the, to sign.
She'll have another one for you this time, I'm going to take that one back with me.
Okay.
That way he can keep his, and I've got mine.
That sounds good.
We applied for this two years ago and just notified them, and we have till early twenty twenty-three to finish it, but we're going to have it done a little before that, so...
I hope so.
I hope so too, yeah.
So you just wait until the last minute?
Yeah, well, that's, doing with that.
There you go, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do I need to sign that? I have, I went ahead and had them do copy.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sean.
You, John.
Yeah. Okay, we got, well, Mark Wynn isn't here yet, neither is Daniel York, so Dan, if you want to come up and fill in, that'd be great.
Just two items, one, reference to software for steelmen, I do not have a coach back, maybe by next month or next week, it might, it's going to be two, three weeks from when they came and talked us, or don't have any numbers on the, the steelmen project. Second thing, this is for you and also for the media that's here, our floodwaters are up, we have several county roads that are closed. Let's see, today is Sunday afternoon, about four thirty-five, five in the evening, we went around, kind of had, we went around, closed off several roads for high water. Monday morning, we had three vehicles in water, all occupied, and that was on County Road two hundred east, north of two eighteen. And literally, while people were stuck in the water, get other vehicles going around, and they had to go around barricades to do this. And just please put out that if there's, the roads closed, do not go through that water, it's hard to tell how deep it is, what the current is. We, we actually had one gentleman who was found unresponsive and passed away, he was not in the water, he was still in his car, his car was not deep, but we don't have a cause of death that's under coroner's investigation right now. We will take enforcement action, it's not, we might, we will give you tickets for district area traffic control licenses. It's, there's no reason to do it, period. But we had three vehicles in the same spot yesterday morning. The rivers are going down, but again, when the roads are barricaded off, do not go around those barricades. If we get called, you will get ticketed, if we see you go through the water, and I have instructed my deputies to hide in the areas where the roads are closed, and if they see anybody go through that water, to arrest them with a citation. So this is not something that we want to play with, it puts the law enforcement officers at risk, it puts the record drivers at risk, having to go in and hook up. A lot of times, I tell them, leave the car in the middle of the water, we're not putting a record driver out in that water to try to pull your drive, plus it's a deterrent for anybody else thinking they can get through it. We'll use the parked cars in the roadway as a deterrent also, so I just want to stress that the high water, it won't take much, if we get any more rain in, in, in the near vicinity, the rivers are going to flood again. So do not go through high water, period. That's all I have.
Hopefully by next week, we'll have some clarification on the ARP program.
Correct, I'm looking also for that too, I'll reach out to some other sheriffs and, and see exactly what they did with, for that funding for some of those issues.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Very good, thanks a lot, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mark? You're right on time. Thank you, Sheriff. Hey, you've been busy.
Building prices have not stopped a thing. Amazingly not, forty dollars a sheet for a USB, it used to be ten dollars a sheet, I don't know how it's still going, but it's going.
Hey, on the line item for mobile homes, can you show negative numbers when they're taken away?
Oh.
I've seen some action out there on the north end of the county.
Yes, that, you, I'm sure all already know, was sold, sold to a large company out of New York.
Somebody said California, I don't know.
And all over the country, different places, and they obviously intend to, are doing, they're going to remove all the old, I was told, new roads. New construction if needed, it sounds like the water might go up there, because they have super problem already, that part wants to shut down. And then bring brand new trailers up. Should look a thousand times better than it did.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
That's a good thing, so yeah, I am actually going to have them, while it was a state permitted hand, hand part, it was not by R zoning, a zone right, it's still on zone ag, it should be R three. So it was just about to be condemned by us, because they lost the state certification, and so the grandfathering in of what it was was going to die, did die. But, so I've contacted the new company, and I'll be applying to just get a rezon. Because obviously, we don't, they're doing good work, we don't want to, oh, wait a minute, it's not done right, you can't do that again, we're not going to do that at all, but just to clean it up, it's going to be a little old part again, let's get it zoned proper.
Do you anticipate any opposition to that, that rezoning?
Well, there's some neighbors that always hated the way it looked, and would like to have bought it out a long time ago and actually just eliminated it, so there could be. But I don't, I know they are, some of the neighbors are also happy to see what's going on, so I don't think it would be...
Yeah.
If it was being sold and bought, and it was kept the same, maintained the same way it was, it's still a problem, yes.
Yeah.
Other than that.
Well, it looks good, good month.
Yep, yep. Actually, we are busy.
Any other questions? Go ahead and make a motion to put it in the minutes.
Someone...
Motion's been made, second, to go ahead and approve the Adams County building and planning report for the month.
And they are building big homes, I mean... A home marker right now is...
You're just crazy.
Yeah, unbelievable. So this is what we started with, and this is what we have ended with, is everything that's... So a three-lot subdivision, which is a minor, is now this, this, and that. This has, not just an even, but even the lot actually is part of this, is all that's in front. And this, obviously, road frontage, and the house is broken off separate. So... Why this is just a long skidney one, I don't know, but, yeah, a hundred and fifty foot wide.
Oh my gosh.
Doesn't seem, it's four acres, but a hundred and fifty foot wide's not much.
Yeah.
It's a lot in town, and that's a lot within a town lot nowadays, but it, it met the, met the criteria through the subdivision ordinance and...
And that's all this right in here.
The only, the only, the only part, this outside blue line, this outside blue line is...
This right here?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A motion, John. Motion's made, second, to approve E and M Gerard subdivision.
All I got.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Stan, I'll be right back. Be able to find the, did you say be able to find the rivets in the steel?
I think so, I'm going to go to, I know, I know, I'm going to go to the right away, that's all they do is steelwork. And see what, have them look at what's done, and try to match it. I don't think it's as big a deal as... I think it's better punch it out, iron parts, just hold them up, clamp them up, drill two holes.
That's traditional pit work.
Well, it looks like they're going to send out award letters, this is just an email telling you that they're going to...
Is that just a preliminary?
Yep, they're going to be sending out award letters.
Not a big one, I thought, not a big number.
Because they were talking about electronic signatures and things like that.
Attached, you will find the award letter, so, but it wasn't attached?
No, I understand you're attached.
Might want to send them an email and tell them you need the attachment.
I really, I wasn't, and I did stop by, because it didn't look right, and I was right on the height, because I did match up, they, they did have that wrong, but... Kind of reinforcement, thirty inches off of grass, and here we are, twenty feet above a raging river, it can be raging today.
I am, yeah, my signature.
And...
I have other signatures, and I am for me.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Find out if they're doing what they need.
Okay.
So like, say, if we have to make pieces for that ridge, can Tennesseia make them and finish them?
Right, yeah, I can do it on your thing or not.
Or have Universal make them up or something, and then Tennesseia finish them.
On the thing that does.
Just go down and...
But just a thought, I didn't know, probably more of those are going to be forthcoming, possibly do.
We'll talk to three of us, just get the...
Right.
Yeah.
I can, I sign the payroll, I'll read with electronics, but that's just my signature.
Yeah.
Okay, Daniel, you're on, you're right on time, how about that? I guess I could say we're on time too, maybe, huh? No, thanks. How are you?
Good.
Good, good.
And then I did add a job description, do you guys each want a copy of that?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, let's go to the report.
So... Failed twenty-nine thousand five hundred and three dollars and received some funding, number three, twenty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. We have currently twenty-six total residents, we did have twenty-seven, but we did have a death this past month. So we're down to twenty-six total, we still have six men's emergency beds.
So the death was expected natural?
Yes, just went a lot thicker, and we got it, but we did not, it was expected, but it just happened very quickly.
Look it over, and then I'll need a motion to approve that. Okay, look it over, and then I'll need a motion to approve that. You made a, um, job description, so like, your bills for seats for the fire.
I did not.
Okay.
Do you?
No, I, I got him here, copies of them with me, I didn't, I was just gonna share with the. Even Stan, how the receipt, or the bill for Service Master wasn't attached, you got that separately.
So I. I have one of the Service Master bills, did you know we were gonna have to?
Yeah, you said something about that one, and included with the windows?
Service Master's actually gonna do the windows and tile repair and some restoration to the windows that I wasn't aware that they were supposed to do, so they came out and gave us a second quote. I think it was around six thousand dollars, and I did talk to Don Mitchell, he did include that.
Six thousand, six ninety-five, ninety-three?
Correct.
And that included?
I have not seen that, that, that bill, Don told me that one. Service Master don't actually send much to us, I believe. And then then bill for Cameron, we're not being, they're not doing them a little bit.
So is that for restoration or repair?
I need a motion on that now, I'll go over this.
Make a move, motion.
Motion's made seconded, we go ahead and approve Danielle's report for the month. Yeah, the restoration work is being done, we approved the three invoices last week for the, they went to Bob Hakes.
Okay.
I told you about that, so we approved those. What we have here is the cleaning was Service Master fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Seven tables were replaced at nine hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-three cents. A popcorn machine, huh? Oh wow, you got a new one. Two hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Alarm system had to be checked out, and that was B Secure, and that was sixty dollars. Replaced a fire extinguisher for a hundred and twenty-five, sixty-nine. Arnold lumber supplied, we got, we had to board up the windows, so we had to get plywood to do that, that was a hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Service Master gave us a quote, we had to replace the windows, there's two windows that need to be replaced and some additional work on ceiling tiles at six thousand six ninety-five, ninety-three. And we had speaker system for six hundred and seventy-five dollars, had to be worked.
I think that's, is that all I have?
So I can take off the one here that you had, the Cameron's renovation at three thousand eight seventy-five, we can strike that off. Okay, so if my math's correct, we're looking at about twenty-four thousand five hundred and six dollars and a penny. Okay, plus what we approved last week.
And I did not, those must have went all through Bob and you and Don Mitchell, I have not.
Right, yeah, yeah, it was about sixty-three hundred, sixty-three hundred dollars.
So do we pay those and get reimbursed, or does the insurance, do we just turn them in and the insurance company?
They are turned into the insurance company, on my understanding, Danielle, correct me if I'm wrong on this, that the insurance company will send us a check?
Correct. I turned them in to the insurance company, they will send you a check, and then I believe we paid them.
Yes, right, that's my understanding, and then that, Tony, I think that's gonna go into general fund, and then we gotta go ahead and pay it out. So we'll have to prove the claims to be paid out of our regular pay cycle.
Do you want those approved today?
Yeah, I think we can go ahead and approve them today.
And those are all the estimates of getting everything back to normal, correct?
Or those are actual invoices, not estimates, right?
Oh, those are. Yeah, they're, they're invoices that we have, yeah.
What was the total again?
Uh.
Twenty-four.
I got twenty-four thousand five oh six oh one, if I did my math correctly.
You're an accountant and a tre, former treasurer, you probably know your numbers.
But we make mistakes too, you know? Yeah, so.
Make a motion to approve those claims.
Okay, all right, motion's been made seconded, we go ahead and approve the claims that pertain to golden metals, uh, restoration, and we will get the money from the insurance company, we'll put it in the general fund, we'll go ahead and pay these out uh, on a regular claim cycle, okay, so when we see these, we'll know what they are, okay, anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to get a job description, a minor change approved, so for, it was for cooks, the dietary, and the cop, copies the, the old job description. At, on page two, I did highlight under education or experience, it was in here that a serve safe certification was required upon appointment, and that is not accurate. We don't require all of the cooks to have serve safe certification, that's, we do require one staff on payroll to have it, not everyone. So on the new one, I just took out that requirement.
Okay, so what you got, education or experience, high school diploma or general education degree, and one-year related experience and or training or equivalent combination of education and experience, is that what you're talking about? That's the new one?
That's the new one.
Okay.
So as long as you have one person on staff that serves safe?
Correct.
Then that's adequate to.
I just for the, for the public, this is a job description for the food service supervisor.
I'm sorry, no, cook, the cook.
The cook, well, this, what I'm looking at is food service supervisor.
That reports to.
That reports to, yes.
Okay.
The top line is the job title of a cook.
Okay, gotcha, my fault. Okay, so it is for the cook, sorry.
Steve, thoughts on there, you run a restaurant?
Looks good to me.
I would second that.
Okay, motion's been made seconded, go ahead.
Me.
What do you think?
Okay, motion's been made seconded, we go ahead and approve the change of the job description for the cook, had golden metals.
I thought it was all the Jarnos down there.
Is that okay? Okay, Danielle, thank you.
We're gonna have about eleven or twelve certified here after.
Next time you bring food with you, okay?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Danielle.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, Mark gets, brings, down to you.
All right, we got something here quick, and then we got Adam Bartram here from Barnes and Thornburg to give you an update on the pending litigation with the sewer district and the motion for joiner with Adams County Health Department and the State Department of Health, as well as I D M and the Attorney General. And before we get to that, though, I've got an agreement for the Sheriff's Department, and this is for incarcerated offenders, provider agreement. Our quality correctional care that provides the inmate medical program for the jail coordinates this agreement with the auditor, with the sheriff, and this is to qualify offenders that qualify for Medicaid to be signed up for Medicaid, and then we have to track that, we have to reimburse the state for part of that cost, but that results in lower medical costs for the inmate program at the jail. The sheriff has reviewed this with quality correctional care and says that we are in compliance, and so I need a motion from the commissioners to approve this year's contract to coordinate Medicaid qualification and payments with Family Social Services Administration through the sheriff and the auditor's office, need a motion to that effect to approve this agreement.
Are you recommending that we approve it?
Mm-hmm, something we have to do every year.
Okay, motion's been made seconded, go ahead and approve the contract part, do I have to sign it, do we all have to sign it?
Yep, well, just one signature right here, Rex, you sign right there, and then they type the information in there, and then they'll send it out. I've asked Jessica and Nate to be here from the Health Department so that they can also be advised as what's happening with the sewer dispute with the sewer district and the possible involvement of the Health Department. Adam Bartram's here, Adam, you wanna come on up and give the commissioners an update, the press is here, so I'm sure they'll be interested in what uh, we have to present. And Chairman.
And it's scary, there's a lot of papers in there.
Send a copy of this to Dan and also back to the F S S A, you see on page ten right here, that's who it goes to.
Adam, thank you, sir.
I think that's what I just handed you. Yep. Okay, I'll walk you through what you're holding in your hand here in a second, but, um, because I think everybody's familiar from a few meetings ago, we do have a lawsuit going on, wanted to give you an update on the litigation, where we're at, there's been a few things that have happened over the last few months, so. Of course, we're in a public session right now, and. Conversations, that sort of thing, cover the whole session, I don't need me. But as you know, certain members of the Adams Committee here in the county have filed lawsuits seeking to declare the state law that requires anyone who's within three hundred feet of a municipal sewer line to connect to that sewer line for public health and safety. They've objected to that, they want the court to say that that law, that state law, is unconstitutional, as in it violates the Indiana Constitution and the United States Constitution under the First Amendment. So the state law obviously supports the safety and health of citizens, and that's, I think what's important here is, that's not just Adams County, they're asking to invalidate the entire state law, meaning that this would affect every citizen in, in the state, not just Adams County. Um, it's our position as the district's counsel that we're doing what we're required to do, the district is required to follow state law, and they can't deviate and choose, pick and choose when they're going to follow state law. And because it's implementing larger interests, this case is fair than the just the district, so recently we filed a, what's called a motion for joiner of necessary parties. We think there are other, other groups that should be involved in this case because it necessarily implements their interests as well. And those necessary parties are the Indiana State Board of Health, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, the Adams County Health Department, and you all as the commissioners, you know, governing body of, of the county. So what you have in front of you is our initial motion, and, and you can, you know, you don't need to obviously read through it now, we we lay out in great detail why we believe these four necessary parties need to be involved in this litigation to protect their interests. Uh, then you're going to see a response, so the plaintiffs' counsel in this case, they filed a response, and then on Friday, we filed what's called our reply, which is kind of the last word. It is now currently, this matter is currently in front of the court, two decide, but we may have a slight delay in that, and I'll talk to you about that here in a second. The reason, the reason for this, for this joiner, is that plaintiffs are asking the court to declare a state law that protects the public health and safety of the citizens of Adams County and of the state to be unconstitutional. Additionally, this is what we think is, is of the utmost importance and why these four parties need to be joined, or to be joined into the lawsuit, is that the plaintiffs in this case are asking the court to authorize alternative means to, to dispose of human waste. So, hey, one, we don't want to connect to the sewer, and two, we want you, court, to say that our alternative methods of disposing of human waste are okay and in line with state law and state regulations. They specifically state in their complaints, uh, that their methods to dispose of their black water and gray water is sufficient for their and their family's needs and does not present a health or safety threat to them, their family, their neighbors, or the public at large. And it's the district's position that they don't get to make that call. That call on whether or not it complies with state law and it's safe and protects our, our public interest is by those necessary parties, State Board of Health, you know, I D M, Local Board of Health, and you all as commissioners. So they have opposed, and you'll see this in their motion, they have opposed our motion to join these parties, their position is essentially, hey, they, they, I don't want to too much, you know, kind of summarize what their position is, you'll see it, but what they say is, this is a very narrow issue. This only has to do with these particular plaintiffs and whether or not they have to connect to the sewer, and, and the reality is, that's just not true. It involves all of the citizens, and it involves the court potentially authorizing alternative methods that may or may not comply with state law. And. When we play this out, and why we think this is of particular importance is, if the court does rule in favor of plaintiffs, they could be adversely affecting the interests of I D M, state health, local health, and the commissioners. If the court denies our motion for joiner, they would be ruling on an interest related to those four parties without allowing them to be in the actual lawsuit. This, this rule for joiner is based in due process, basically, if you're right to potentially affect it, then you should be able to be in court and defend those rights. So, like I said, all briefs have been submitted, this is currently pending in front of the court, but recently, and you may recall this from the prior, uh, prior update, is the plaintiffs in this case are required to notify the Indiana State Attorney General of their challenge to the constitutionality of the state law. They didn't do that in a timely manner, so we were forced to file a motion to compel them to do that, they have now done that, and the attorney, the office of the Attorney General has now filed an appearance in this case. There's two members of the Attorney General's office on behalf of Attorney General Arquita, who have entered into this case, and they filed a motion for the court to delay their ruling on this motion while they essentially get up to speed on this case. So I don't expect a ruling quickly in the next few weeks, because I suspect the court's going to heed the, the A G's request. Uh, but this is currently pending in front of the court, and we anticipate, you know, we're gonna have further intervention by the Attorney General in this case as well. And I will tell you, one other thing that we want to, and you'll see without getting too detailed with this, uh, one of the reasons that you join parties in a case like this is to prevent, is to basically get everything in front of the court at once, and to prevent piecemeal litigation or future litigation. And that's certainly a concern in this case, because if the Health Department were to issue an order, uh, you know, instructing the plaintiffs to connect to the sewer, we would now have enforcement, you know, we'd have enforcement actions as well, so we'd have additional litigation over the same subject matter, the same parties. So the, the goal of the district is to get everybody here together to get this issue figured out, what's wrong.
And we've got Nate and Jessica from the Health Department here, and, you know, we've been talking about this, and, and I know we have in the past where there's been a, an issue of whether or not someone would connect, the Health Department actually filed suit to require a connection or to have that system completely discontinued and, and, and disconnected, and then the house could not be occupied. So that, the Health Department has already taken action in this regard in the past, and I, and they likely would do so in the future, which would lead to multiple litigation, litigating the same issues again, just like Adam just explained, and so the idea would be to get those things all before the court now, because we know that will be the next step if, you know, if, if it goes forward and, and those issues aren't decided now, they're going to have to be decided later, and then we're in the, essentially the same litigation again with the parties that we've seek, are seeking to join now, and the idea is, let's get them in now, let's get it decided now in this litigation, and let's, let's get it done.
The economic reality of that is, if there are additional future lawsuits over the same subject matter, it's gonna cost them half their more money.
Want to have any questions, Nate, Jessica, got anything to say, any, any questions?
I guess we got a waiting game then, don't we?
I mean, the regular track on a, on a traditional, you know, say, single employee federal court case is somewhere between 12 to 18 months. If this motion is granted, there's going to be more parties. So this, this litigation, you know, absent some kind of settlement, which I don't believe the district's interested in at this point because a settlement would essentially be, hey, we don't, we don't do what we're required to do, which is for state law. So there's really not a lot to talk about if you're on a settlement case. So I think on a crash course, litigating this and getting a ruling from the court.
And the, and the particular plaintiffs involved in this case are involved with a, with a, which was Sewer District Project Number Two and they're well within the 300 feet. I mean, very, very close to the sewer line and there's no question that all other individuals similarly situated are required to connect and have connected to the sewer and these parties are refusing to connect. And so literally, it's going to take a court order one way or another to declare whether they have to connect or not. And the district's position is they are required to connect by state law. And it is state law. That has to be decided.
Just from reading the first page of their response, it doesn't sound like they think too much here.
You can talk about that off-line.
But I want to thank Barnes and Thornburg and Adam and his colleagues have done a fantastic job in assisting the district and us and responding to this. And so we've said all along that this is going to take, most likely going to take an order from the court. And, and it, and it definitely needs to have the involvement, in our opinion, of the Attorney General and the State Department of Health and IDM because all of those issues are involved.
Okay, we're good. Thanks, Adam.
That's all I got.
So yeah, I got three invoices here. I just need to inform the gentleman of. We got our Microsoft licensing bills, which I think is going to be a pleasant surprise based on what we have projected. We got one here and this is Adele Technologies, $16,123.40 and another one for $61,765.33. So you're looking at about $77,000, $78,000. And we had projected it could be somewhere between 90 and 100. So they were negotiated down. Mike was able to do that. So I would need these two, we'll take these separate. We'll take these two Dell together and I got one other one to present. So once again, $16,123.40 and $61,765.33. Microsoft licensing, it's going to come out of account 1,000, And the money's already budgeted there. So gentlemen, if you would make a motion to approve these two. Second, motion's made in second. Tony, that we go ahead and approve these two. I'll give you those so you can pull those figures off of that one. The next one, this is going to be for the secondary circuit. This is in the RF room down at the jail that's being remodeled. It's Joe H. Construction. We've already got a line item for that. It's 38,302.000.9600 of $20,000. So I would need that invoice approved then. Second, motion's made in second. Then we go through the 20,000 to Joe H. And you got the line items right there, Tony, if you need to refer to those.
Okay.
And that, so. Okay.
Yeah, I will need those.
All right, very good. That's all I got, gentlemen. Anything else? Public? Ed?
Yes. A couple of quick things here. I just wanted to say thank you, gentlemen, for having the doors, all four doors of this building open for the tax rush that ended yesterday. We had a lot of comments, a lot of positive comments. People appreciated not having to walk clear around to this door to be able to come in. Those first 12 parking spots have been closed off for the COVID shots. I understand that. I would suggest, this is me personally, I don't know how Tony thinks, but keep it, the doors open. Unless we are going to have some real security out there, that's a whole other ballgame. And if you do, because you want to secure the building, I understand that. But right now, there is no security at this door or any of the doors. So with that, why not have a wall open for the convenience of our taxpayers, our citizens? That'd be my, my thoughts on that. You guys came a point to have to go into this week, which would be the personal property.
Personal property taxes are due May 17th, yeah.
Yes, and you have to make a decision. So that's what you guys. I want to let you know I have the collections as of this morning. We have brought in, we have posted $8,110,000 of our spring collection so far. That's just a shy bit over 50%. We still have about $3.5 million of postings that are in the bank that we haven't got the coupons yet. It takes a couple of days for them to get them all together. I'll get that later Sunday afternoon, but most of it will be Wednesday afternoon or Thursday and will happen as posted. Our goal is still 97% plus. And as of this morning, we're just shy of a half a million dollars ahead of last year. So I feel good that we're well on track.
And you're still opening mail too, probably, aren't you?
Yep, had a big bunch today, so.
I figured you would.
Everything that's been postmarked as of yesterday is still current.
Right.
And we'll be getting a bunch clear through Friday. So that's it. Just want to keep you guys up to date on everything.
All right, very good. Thanks a lot.
For me to relay all that to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing else, gentlemen?
Well, while Mark and Nathan or Jess are here, Nathan had brought in a proposed ordinance for county, for lack of a better term, county garbage and cleanup and stuff like that. Is that anything that we need to?
We need to further discuss that.
To act on?
We need to further discuss that.
And did you guys all get a copy of that?
I don't know if I still, I know Nate showed it to me. I probably have a copy.
I think I gave you a copy up there too.
I think so. Email it to me. I'll make sure Brooke gets it out to all of them.
It's just a rough, 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 rough.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk, we'll take that.
And that wasn't vehicles, that was just junk. Yep, okay. I didn't see that. So yeah, email it to me.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn if you're done.
Yeah, I don't have anything else. Do you want to have anything else?
So move.
All right.
Motion's been made second. Then we go ahead and adjourn.
Yeah, you can.
Very good. Thank you.